Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October eighth, two thousand and twenty four Select Board Meeting. I would like to welcome everyone. It's nice to see some folks here with us. And the first thing on our agenda, as always, is our public comment. A quick review of the rules. You all have two minutes to speak. And the total time for public comment will be a total of ten minutes. If you do wish to speak, I'm going to ask, as I do all the time, to give your name and where you live. And you can make statements that are not on the agenda this evening. So, does anybody have public comment?
I do. My name is Alicia Bemis, and I'm at three ten Stowberry Road. And I believe there's a question of whether to keep in place the twenty mile an hour speed limit.
That's actually on our agenda this evening.
Oh, we cannot speak on that. Oh, I'm sorry then. I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Neither of us.
Roll. So.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I have a board.
So, does anybody else have any public comments? Seeing no hands raised, so seeing and hearing none. Board member updates with their committees or anything else.
Recognizing that October is breast cancer awareness month, and I know the town that puts some information on their Facebook page about that. And also that October is domestic violence awareness month. And if you or someone you know is affected by domestic violence, please contact the Domestic Violence Services Network, which is available at dvsn.org. Or Lieutenant Kelly Barhite, who's sitting back there and is our liaison to DVSN. And on a lighter note, today is Happy Fluffy Notter Day.
Well, thank you. The Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you. First, I am pleased to announce that our free cash was certified yesterday at three point three million dollars. It is great news for us as we prepare to kick off fiscal twenty six budget season. I'd like to thank and recognize our finance team of Julie, Brad, and Kristen for getting the documents in for certification. I am also happy to share that the state approved our housing production plan without any feedback or comments. So the new plan is now in effect until August, two thousand and twenty nine. And I would like to thank Valerie Ortiz and Michael Slagle for all their work that they put into that plan. I would like to recognize Officer John Butler for his work enforcing the speed limit in the school zone during the morning hours. It's really great to see his efforts in keeping the school zone safe. And I hear from a number of residents that are pleased to see him out there and see him visible. So just want to say thank you to Officer Butler. And a reminder that we will be hosting Stow case on Wednesday, October thirtieth, from six to eight at Pompo. We are encouraging kids to come in their costumes for trick or treating. We'll have snacks, store prizes, no cost raffles, vendors, departments represented, early voting opportunities, and more. Follow our social media and our website for teasers leading up to the event, which will start this week. So we hope to see everybody there.
Any questions? Okay. Moving on. It is my pleasure to recognize a new scout who has achieved the highest rank in scouting, which is an Eagle Scout, Thomas Hastings. And we have two things that we would like to make sure he gets. First, the letter, Dear Thomas, the Select Board of the Town of Stowe congratulates you on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank of the Boy Scouts of America. As an exemplary scout who has performed a number of services for his community, the Board would like to acknowledge your accomplishments and express its best wishes for your continued success and involvement with the community. Achieving Eagle Scout status is an accomplishment of which you can be extremely proud. The Board is confident that your experience as a Boy Scout will serve you well in your future endeavors. Which will be signed. And also a, oh, we've never shown it, the Certificate of Achievement. That's awarded to Thomas from the Select Board. And it says Certificate of Achievement presented to Thomas Hastings in recognition of your achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations, Thomas, on achieving your goal. We are proud to have you as a member of our community and appreciate the service project you completed in September, two thousand and twenty four. You built two rescue boxes and installed them at Lake Boone in honor of a local police officer who tragically drowned. You worked with town officials, troop leadership, and other members of the community to construct the rescue boxes and equip them with ring buoys, floating rope, and life preservers with the aim of preventing water drownings. We wish you the best of luck in the future, Stowe Select Board. And I can tell you, I've seen the boxes where they're placed. They're placed very strategically, and they are extremely visible. So they will be able to use for their intended use. Moving on. Discussion of.
Will you be.
Did you want to take a motion?
Sorry, I'm just on a roll.
Mr. Chair, I move to recognize Boy Scout Thomas Hastings for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and to sign the letter in proclamation for his Court of Honor.
Second.
I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Okay, discussion of possible votes on the November, two thousand and twenty four state election warrant. I'll take a motion on that now, please.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move to sign the November, two thousand and twenty four state election warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none?
Can I just add one comment? In the Stowe ballot, people, there's a sixth question. It's not included in this book because it's a referendum for our rep. But we will have copies of the warrant ballots on our website. But this book should have been sent to everybody. Every household should have gotten one, or at least every household with a voter in it should have gotten one linked or online. But so there's the five ballot questions statewide, and Stowe has a sixth one.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Let the record show it's unanimous.
May I ask the town clerk a question while she's here?
Sure.
Mr. Chair. Do you just want to remind folks when early voting starts?
Sure. Early voting starts October nineteenth. It's Saturday, and we're there from nine to three, and it ends on November first. And we're in the office in this building in the Whitney Room, eight thirty to four. We also have the Stow case on the thirtieth. We'll be there in the, at Pompo from six to eight. So if anybody wants, anybody comes down and wants to vote, we can do that. All the information is online.
And where online?
On the town meeting election website. I also will get one on the news and announcement page where it will be on the front page, and that will get distributed to anybody who requests it.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Lake Boone Dam Project update. I see. Mr. Bruce Fletcher.
Be me. Who do you want me?
Wherever you would like to be, sir.
Normally, I'd sit at the table.
Well, bring a chair up and come on up.
All right. He's a little scary.
Just don't do it.
He's just going to look at you and report you something else.
It only bites once in a while.
I can make a bite. I'm here to bore you for twenty minutes, hopefully, so you'll nod off and not ask me any questions. Actually, I don't know when you were last updated on the dam project, so let me go back a little bit with some highlights. So this process has been going on for a few years, as you know, and the scope has evolved over time. In February of two thousand and twenty two, a presentation was made by Weston and Sampson to the Conservation Commission. And that can be found on the Conservation Commission webpage under the section called Permit Applications and Plans Under Review. But that's a pretty old presentation. And then exactly a year later, January, almost exactly, January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three, Weston and Sampson made a presentation to the Select Board with an updated plan and a slideshow, and that's posted on Town Administrator's webpage. Plans have evolved since then, too. But at that time, the plans were very preliminary in nature, and they solicited a significant response from the public with a lot of questions. In May of twenty three, Denise brought me on board to help manage the project after Steve Naidol left. And I took that long list of questions and comments from the butters that were shared with me, most of which were quite legitimate and valid questions, although many were premature considering the stage at which the project was at. So I went about trying to address some of those. One of the biggest questions was where the staging and parking areas would be and where northbound traffic would turn around when the, when, on the approach of the dam when the road was closed. So I looked at numerous properties, and I spent a lot of time meeting with the butters and nearby residents to address those issues. The engineers and I studied the Callings property at length at Bob Calling's suggestion, drawing up conceptual staging areas on the property, including a temporary connector road from the south end of the dam down across the wetlands where there's that huge number of blown down trees. And some, down onto some dry upland areas south of Bailey's Brook where the equipment and materials could have been staged, including a possible connection to the road through the museum property. But those ideas didn't come to fruition for several reasons, but mostly because it was determined not to be cost effective. So during that time, I was also in negotiations with the next of butter south, owners of the first house south of the dam at number one oh five, the Warners from Acton, about the use of their land. And negotiations with them was readily successful. Regrading of that parcel for use as a staging area was incorporated into the design plans. At the same time, I was in negotiations with Dr. Linda Reynolds at number one twenty three Barton, which is right around the corner, about the use of her land for the construction of a temporary turnaround area for traffic when the road closed. Positive outcome from both of those negotiations with both the property owners resulted in the leases that you have before you tonight that need signatures. But before I get into those in any more detail, let me tell you what else was going on during that time. At that presentation to the board on the end of January of last year, Weston and Sampson engineers described the design process in one of their slides, which included seven bulleted items. One of those was the grant applications. Our first grant application, and hopefully, only so far, but hopefully not the last one, was applied for in February of twenty two from the EEA's Dam and Seawell Program. EEA is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And as you know, a million dollars was received, which became active in September of twenty two, was set to expire on June thirtieth of this year. But by the end of two thousand and twenty three, FY twenty three, June of last year, none of that grant money had been spent. So the grant administrator at EEA agreed to give us two hundred thousand dollars as an outright appropriation for FY twenty three instead of in response to a reimbursement request. That money is now in the town coffers and is still unspent, waiting for us to use at some point. The remaining eight hundred thousand was available for this, for FY twenty four. So as we approached the end of FY twenty four, June of this year, which was the potential expiration date of the grant, we still hadn't asked for reimbursement for any expenditures. So because we had been paying for all the engineering and me and the small legal expenses from those local funds, I mean, from local funds. So the grant administrator and I had a little chat, and he agreed to give us four hundred and ten thousand dollars in reimbursement for FY twenty four, which meant we had to scramble in May and June and July to come up with expenditures that totaled that amount and apply for reimbursement. And we did that. We bought items that will be used on the dam in the future, including new aluminum stop, stop log assembly, slide gate for the low level outlet, pezometer for monitoring transient groundwater in the core of the dam during and after construction, and floating safety booms for around the new spillway. Those combined in, combined with invoices from our engineers for design and permitting and other items directly related to our work on the dam added up to enough to get us full reimbursement for the four hundred and ten thousand dollars. The town received that just last month on September seventeenth. The balance of that million dollar grant will be available this fiscal year, and most of it being set aside for FY twenty six. And with any luck, we will be eligible for additional funds from that same dam and seawell program. Another huge component of the process is the environmental permitting, of course. Very time consuming and very expensive. The number of filings and applications that have to be made to various agencies is just crazy. After an enormous amount of work on the part of the engineers and the permitting team at Weston and Sampson, the two hundred and thirty three page environmental notification form was filed on April of this year. A PDF of the filing is posted on Denise's webpage and on the Conservation Commission webpage. That resulted in the certificate from the, under the Mass Environmental Policy Act, the MIPA certificate, and issued on May thirty first of this year. The next big thing is an application of the Army Corps of Engineers under their jurisdiction over disturbances to waters of the United States under the Federal Clean Water Act. That process is ongoing at this time, and things are happening. Proposed mitigation for those disturbances and filling of wetlands has to meet the approval of the Corps before they'll issue a permit. And their standards do not necessarily align with state and local standards, of course. It's my understanding that the preferred mitigation is wetlands restoration rather than the old idea of replication, which would be trying to replicate filled wetlands with new wetlands, which rarely worked. So because there's no place adjacent to the dam itself to provide wetlands restoration, the Corps has an in lieu of program, which include, includes a fund that can be paid into in lieu of actually providing mitigation. The funds would be earmarked for mitigation at some other site somewhere else in the state, which isn't, obviously, where we want our money to go, somewhere else. And the cost to the town would be enormous if we were forced to go that route. Conservation Commission has been extremely helpful in this process. Weston and Sampson came up with the ideas where mitigation might be able to take place around the lake. None of those really panned out. I tried to find places. And then Kathy Sfaras suggested that we might be able to do it at the Stoikers Country Club north coast, because the town has acquired that land and already has preliminary plans, plans for wetlands restoration there. So that was a good idea. Weston and Sampson's permitting team liked it, the design team. And the meeting with the Conservation Commission, Weston and Sampson, and the Corps was held. And then a, a in-person meeting with a rep from the Corps at the lake and the driving range of the country club resulted in the, the gentleman from the Army Corps thinking that it was, seemed like a good idea. So we've been working, people have been working on that diligently. And just within the last day or two, more has happened. And the possibility of doing mitigation there at Stoikers appears very promising. We're in conversations with the feds, state, and local, I mean, state and the owner of Stoikers about this. And everyone's hopeful that this might just work out as a solution to our mitigation requirements. It's looking good, and more meetings are planned. Imminent, actually. Getting back to the leases before you. The one oh, one oh five Barton includes an exhibit of two plans. They're reduced in size to fit on an eight and a half page, so what you saw was probably difficult to look at. But there's actually not much to see. I have larger scale plans here, and the property owner has been given a much larger scale plan, full scale plans, if you want to see them. But what, basically what's happening there is the trees will be removed. This is the property, first house south of the dam. The, the old single story, single bay garage will be removed and a temporary storage container provided for them. The trees will be removed and a regrading of the site to accommodate a staging area will all be done, the cost will be built into the, built into the project. This is a win-win for them because they were planning to do major work there anyway, with an addition to the house and a new garage. So this, this will save them the cost of doing that. That fill will remain in place when the project is done. And, and the usable area will enhance the property. So that's their composite compensation. And it's a win-win for both parties, for us and, you know, win-win for them and us. So those negotiations went well. And then around the corner at one twenty one, one twenty three Barton, there's a small triangular parcel of land that's just got scrub rust on it now and some, maybe some small trees. And, but it was big enough for me to draw a sketch of a turnaround, big enough for trucks and school buses and and that's included in the lease, too. You saw, if you looked at it, that sketch is one of the exhibits in the lease. And that's, that property belongs to Dr. Linda Reynolds. And so what would happen is we'd be put in a temporary gravel turnaround. And, and then after the project is over, we'd remove it and re-lome and cede the property and make it look better than it does now. She was in favor of that. She was, she wanted to be helpful. She also wanted a little compensation, which made sense. She asked for seven hundred dollars a month, with two hundred of that being waived as a donation to the town, making it essentially a five hundred dollar a month rent for the term of the lease, which seemed reasonable to me. So we went forward with that. All the other language in the lease is just fluff to make it look important. But it does spell out all the little details of what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed on the properties and everyone was agreeable. Both owners have signed. So if you're willing, hopefully, we can get your signatures on those tonight. Now, if you have any questions, I, I may or may not have the answers.
Before we move forward at this point, since he stepped into the lease, can I get the motion?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Chair, I move to accept and sign the lease agreements for the Lake Boone Dam Project, namely Reynolds, one twenty one Barton Road, Kalbanal Family LLC, one oh five Barton Road.
Second.
Okay, and now we can open up for questions and concerns. I saw your hand raised.
I just wanted to add, so two things. If you'll recall, at town meeting, annual town meeting, town meeting authorized these leases pending your approval and signature. And town council has been working with us, so town council has already fully vetted these and obviously put in the legal requirements to protect both parties. So just to put that out there.
That's why they're so long.
Yeah.
Hector.
Stupid question.
Ooh, I like.
So these two are turnarounds, both on the south side of where the project will be?
Yeah.
Why is there a need for two, and is there no need for?
Well, the one at one oh five is mostly a, for staging.
Okay.
Staging of equipment and materials.
Okay.
And hopefully, there won't be much traffic getting that far to turn around, except for the few houses. And anybody living there wouldn't do it anyway. They'd go the other way. But that's what the turnaround at one twenty one Barton Road is for, so that hopefully, there'll be very little traffic coming further north than one twenty one.
Okay.
So that one, one oh five is primarily for staging. Staging, parking of equipment and materials.
And everybody on the north side would just take a Pine Hill Road?
Turnaround at Pine Point.
Pine Point, right.
Yeah. We won't, we're going to try to keep traffic off of Pine Point, except using the mouth of it as a turnaround.
And for one twenty one, there's some mention about demolishing an existing garage of the property. Is that?
That's in there.
Okay, and that's, they're, they were looking to demolish it, and now there's the opportunity to get rid of it?
Yep, they're, they're, that was, they were going to do that anyway.
Glad we could help.
Yeah, glad we could help.
Questions, comments? Bruce, thank you for all of your work on this, as well as all the other parties involved. I know this has been a long, drawn out process, and will probably continue to be, so thank you for your perseverance and diligence
You're welcome.
in this project.
It will continue, because we may not see that permit from the Army until next year. And then DEP issues two more permits, and local conservation can issue a permit somewhere in there, as long as everybody's on the same page. And they're actually trying to get on the same page. The, the Corps asked what the Conservation Commission might want. Conservation Commission is interested in what the Corps would be looking for. So everybody's trying to get on the same page.
Right. That's unusual.
We're lucky you're the man for the job.
Yes.
I'm just standing by watching.
Like I said.
So, seeing and hearing no other comments, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record show it's unanimous. Bruce, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that, is that for both motions?
There's only one motion.
There's only one motion, sorry.
Properties were made in a single motion.
You were actually efficient.
That was my stupid question.
So next on the agenda is the Sudbay Road Safety Zone discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I move to review the Sudberry Road Safety Zone previously approved at the January twenty third, two thousand and twenty four meeting.
Second.
So, to clarify, we have.
You should actually vote on that motion, because that's to open up the discussion to review. That's not for action.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that. Discussion or comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Okay. We have two options. To either reaffirm the existing Sudbury Road Safety Zone as previously approved, or option two, um to remove the Sudbury Road Safety Zone and install rumble strips which are temporary, which can be removed, on either side of the Pine Bluff Recreation Area. We'll open it up for comments. Again, in this situation, uh I ask.
So Valerie, as the Chair of the Traffic Safety, is running down from the Planning Board meeting. Just say no, here she comes.
Can you repeat what you just said about the rumble strips? Can you, I didn't quite, is that an alternative?
It's the alternative. It's a second option.
So bumping it back up to what it was, but adding those strips?
Adding rumble strips in that area which are removable. They're not permanent.
Of course.
Good evening, Valerie. It's quite a right name to apologize. So we were just opening up uh discussion and I had just reiterated the, and I'll reiterate the options we're discussing. Which is the first one, to just reaffirm what was already approved. Or option two, to remove the safety zone, but install uh the temporary rumble strips. And I was just about to open it up for public comment. Uh what I'd like to do is to get the report from the Traffic Safety Committee as to their thoughts on either of these two options.
Sure. Um so I know the Police Chief is also here um to to step in, so let me know if I'm saying anything incorrectly here. Um but the the committee did discuss um both options and um came to, came to agreement that um the the option of keeping um the safety zone as is is acceptable, as is um some other type of traffic safety or um slowing mechanism like these temporary rumble strips. So the idea is that something is clearly needed. Um this has been an item that has been brought to the attention from the time that the Traffic Safety Committee um began a few years back. Um and like every issue that's brought before that committee, we take a look at the data, we take a look at the road, um what kinds of options we have available to us, both policy-wise and um you know, physical implementation. Um and we, as a committee, did feel like the the safety zone was an appropriate use of um the policy options that we have. Um so either, at this point, the committee says, you know, either have the safety zone in place as is or or choose to to look into another mechanism to slow people down ahead of Pine Bluff.
And that's why the second option of the rumble strips, they, so to be clear, it is the opinion of the Advisory Committee that either of these two options are acceptable.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the Chief. Any comments?
Get high in the back the whole time. So, the um this town voted in two thousand seventeen to allow us to change the uh speed on certain, for certain vulnerable users, safety zone being one of them. It was voted on a town meeting. Uh there was a policy put in place by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee that uh when we find complaints or hear complaints or notice complaints, that we look into them and come up with alternatives. We try to do a low-cost alternative be before we do a massive project of reworking a roadway. Uh some of the meetings that we had, they date back to two thousand twenty-one. And then we come forward all the way through, uh till we came to that January meeting. We did do a uh a traffic study on that roadway. We did put down uh uh data tubes and we did find that the roadway was in fact um calculating speeds around thirty-four, thirty-five miles an hour, which was the speed limit. However, in that area, uh for those vulnerable users, which is uh playgrounds and parks, which the town had told him, uh is a safety zone area, that we could lower the speed limit to twenty. So we did find that that was the option at that time that we could take. We spoke to uh a limited number of people, of neighbors. And then we did finally hear from more neighbors that it was not acceptable. So we revisited. Uh we did find that, we did contact Mass DOT. Uh they did approve, uh they looked at what the process that we took. And they, we did hear back from Lori Shadick, the District Three Traffic Engineer, and that she did uh agree with how we did things and that uh we didn't need to go through any further. Uh there's no requirement on us to do a uh further study and uh that we, within the requirements of Mass DOT and how we did uh how we did everything. That roadway is a special speed regulation road. Um the concern at first was how we do uh enforcement on it. And is it, there's two different laws on speeding, Chapter ninety-seventeen, Chapter nineteen-eighteen. One's an absolute speed law, one's greater than reasonable. Chapter ninety-seventeen is greater than reasonable. That's where we'd have to, for enforcement, for the police, would have to make uh enforcement action. I was the one who suggested these uh high-speed rumble strips. They're not like the ones you see on the highway, um like the the dug-up rumble strips. They are a small little bump uh uh that are designed for roadways that are seventy miles an hour and for motorcycles. It's a reminder to slow down in this area. Um to increase the speed back up to thirty-five, but to make sure people are not going over thirty-five or to remind them of what the speed limit is. That was uh my suggestion. At the time that we put this speed zone in, we did not have that option. These are quite expensive. Um you're able to come up with funding. They're about twenty-five hundred dollars for an eleven-foot, um eleven-foot by one foot. And that it would only cover half of each lane. And then that way, other vulnerable users, people who are walking, people who are using scooters, people who are using wheelchairs, people using um walkers or whatever it is, um could still get, or bicycles could still get passed without uh having been inflicted if we did an actual speed bump in the roadway. So that's how we came up with, uh when we voted on as a committee. So and we did hear from, at the last Traffic Safety for many residents, on both sides. One to keep it the same and one to keep it, to raise it back up again, and also to keep it no restrictions. Uh I don't suggest the no restrictions, just based on the people that, the amount of people that are using it. I can't make, we can't make it a school zone, like to have them come on at certain times, so that's why the uh putting the rumble strips down, then in the wintertime, they would be removed. And not, and then uh in the high-use time, would be put back in. The ones that we're looking at don't uh take away from the road integrity. So some of them, you have to like drill into the, to the pavement, which if you don't plug it right, what happens is the water gets in and the ice gets in and the road deteriorates. This one does not do that. Uh that's why we were looking at this more expensive one. Cause we don't wanna cost the town more longer now when you have to repave the whole roadway.
Okay. And did you say there is a possibility of funding for it somewhere or?
Yes, we have a limited amount of funds to cover some costs, some of this cost.
Okay.
In our committee.
That's good to know. Okay, um Lieutenant's here. Does she have any comments or anything?
No, just here.
At this point in this memorial support.
Just here.
Um I will take uh comments if you have anything, Madam Administrator.
I do not.
No matter, okay. Um from the public, I will ask that you identify yourselves and where you reside. Um and again, uh all comments or concerns, please be directed to the Chair. There's to be no side comments back and forth or between residents, so that we can keep uh proper decorum. So your hand was up first, so.
Thank you. I'm Deborah Hennessy. I live at three forty-three Sudbury Road. I have been a Stowe resident for forty-one years. I have lived in my existing residence for thirty-eight plus years, just for the record. I have a few things to say and I will keep them brief. Changing an earlier decision and overruling a town committee is not a trivial matter, but in this matter, we believe that this is the only fair and reasonably result for the following reasons. None of the abutters were notified prior to this happening, other than in websites, social media, and posted in newspapers. Not all people do this, so I'm sorry. Usually when the town does something, abutters are notified, something of a magnitude. The traffic in study disproved, as he said, the main and medium was thirty-four and thirty-five. There didn't appear to be a speed problem. Of the eighty-nine calls from the Police Department from two twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-four, nine of them were location chains, were not relevant. Eight were from other residents. Seventy-two were from one resident, which is ninety percent of all calls about Sudbury Road to the Police Department. There was supposed to be a form, uh according to their rules, that fifty percent or more support this. There wasn't one, but I guess that's minor. Um and the safety has to be twenty-four-seven and for a park that is basically seasonal. To have one person, one resident, be able to control the town committee and speed laws based on calling and complaining is kind of sad. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time and reconsideration.
Thank you. That's how your hand up next.
So my name is Brendan Lee. I live at three-two-two Sudbury Road and I've lived there for thirty-one years. I just wanted to touch on this a bit and I asked a couple of questions. So in those thirty-one years, I've never, of course, I've never, I've raised three kids there, put them on and off the bus, never felt compelled to call the police about speed in that, in those thirty-one years. Have people gone by? Typically, it's late at night, probably high school kids, sure. I'm sure like every other road, but I've never like just looked upon it as an issue uh bigger than what it was. I never felt my kids', you know, safety was in jeopardy. They played, you know, on, on many times with a ball and this, that and the other. Um so when I saw the signs, it was a complete shock. I didn't know. I'm not one who, to be transparent, comes to these meetings per se, so I didn't know that we, that's about, that could take place without the neighbors being consulted at least. So when that went up, it was a bit of surprise, those two twenty-mile-an-hour signs, which, you know, I know Officer Lee says that's within the guidelines, twenty miles an hour. I'm like, that's, to me, I think, a golf cart goes twenty. I think it's just a little absurd um to go that low. So that being said, a couple of questions is um with regards to the strips, I, I don't know if I can direct this to Officer Solis.
To the Chair, please. Any questions? I'll take it from there.
I just, is, can we have, so it's one or the other. It's if if the uh speed goes back to what it was, I believe it was thirty-five, strips go in place. If it stays at twenty, strips do not go in place. If the strips, if if that, if I'm correct in saying that. And secondly, uh this is one question. Secondly, is there any way we could get some sort of image of said strip to see what, you know, we're considering, if that's even up for debate? Is it something that, you know, if you're not paying attention, you have bottom line card, you have to literally stop at a speed bump. So those are, I don't, I mean, I'm just here to voice, you know, uh and and the other question, I guess, is were we supposed to be consulted? I mean, it's it's been mentioned several times that residents and neighbors and stuff like that. I don't know of anyone that this has come to my attention, just, you know, walking dog and this, that and the other, where someone's come up, hey, have you, you know, noticed they're talking about changing the speed limit? Like it was, I was blindsided, so. And again, I don't know, maybe we're allowed to be blindsided. I'm not aware, so that's all I'm here to say.
Okay. Pursuant to the uh two questions, actually, one of the questions needs to go back to the Chair of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and that's his first question. So is the committee actually asking for one of the two options?
Um we did not vote on a preference between the two, though I'll say that we um.
No, what I'm asking is it's either option one or option two, not eliminating everything.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yes. That it, we feel that something needs to be done. Yes.
Very good. And the second question, uh do you have an image or anything?
For descriptive purposes, we say rumble strip. It's a high-speed alert strip and it's three-quarters of an inch off the ground.
Okay.
So it's. Yeah, so it's not what you think of like, like the highway, like those rumble strips. It's eleven feet by one foot, like three-quarters of an inch.
Okay, thank you. Chief, is it, on the top of it, is it a smooth surface? So it's one just?
Yeah, it's just.
Okay.
Need a comment, cause I know a couple of folks have asked. So there is no, excuse me. There is no legal requirement to notify abutters by abutter notices or whatnot. The legal requirement is a notice to be posted in the paper, which was done. Um and that was done a few weeks in advance of the school safeties. I don't remember the timeline. Um but it was posted on our website. Um it was, did go onto our social media and it was in the Stowe Independent prior to implementation.
Thank you for the clarification. Um any other comments from anybody?
Thanks. Um Alicia Bemis, I'm at three-ten Sudbury Road. Um we have been there, my husband and I have been there for seven years, which um seems like a short amount of time compared to some of residents who have been there longer. But I only speak to that because I'm not really sure what the relevance is. Um I I don't, I understand that long-term residents may have had previous experiences, but we are the house that is directly across the street from the entrance and exit to Pine Bluff. So I could argue that we have the biggest vantage point as to what goes on in and out of that exit and entrance. And um also being directly across from the soccer fields that the, have no barrier except for maybe a two-foot natural stone fencing from where games are being played and the road. Um we definitely feel like it is a safety concern of how fast people drive on, in that specific area. Um I, I, it seems like the Traffic Committee had something brought to their attention. They did their due diligence. They assessed data, did research on it, presented data. You folks voted. Um and I'm not sure where the evidence is that, to the opposition, that it's, are people thinking that it's not necessary for us to try to have people slow down at a highly visited park? Um it's, I, I'm not sure what the rationale would be for that. Um I think if anything, we wanna make our street safer. And I think slowing down cars is only beneficial. I I'm not sure where the, what the reasoning would be to retroactively raise a speed limit that you folks already voted on. If anything, I think it would be a great idea to have both the rumble strip and the speed limit where, at the twenty. Um I, I, I think that we're trying to create a safety zone, a safety zone for a highly trafficked park. And I'm also a little um confused about the fact that at least as long as my husband and I have lived there, we've been known to have a twenty-five mile an hour. we've been known to have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit at Queens Lane, from Queens Lane to Honey Pot. And so this is only extending the twenty-five from Queens Lane to Honey Pot back about six hundred feet is my understanding and lowering it twenty miles an hour, I mean, five miles an hour. So we're already asking, and that's been a longstanding speed limit, that nobody seems to be complaining about now. I'm not sure why making a slower entrance and exit to Pine Bluffs would be a problem. So we are certainly asking that the twenty mile an hour stay in place.
Any other comments? Your hand up was first.
All right, I'm Charlie Robbie. I live at two seventy-seven Sudbury Road. I admit that it also blindsided me when the sign went up, but that's because I don't come to meetings. I don't often read the paper, so that's on me. When I saw it, though, I was so happy because I have two young children. We've been living there since twenty fifteen. We also have a dog. And we experience, have experienced a lot of speeding. We're just seeing a lot of speeding. Also, coming out of our driveway into the road is very difficult, very difficult to see, whatnot. When people are speeding, it creates very dangerous conditions. So these twenty mile per hour safety zone signs have been really great. I don't think they're changing most people's speed in the area, just from what I've observed. However, I do think they're helping. So and I agree with the last commenter that I don't, I don't see a reason why this is a bad idea, especially for all the residents in the area where this is a particularly narrow road and with all the traffic, especially now, coming for, you know, whatever it is now, the number eight apple orchard in the country, which I don't believe that we had that kind of widespread marketing, social media marketing many, many years ago. So I believe it's more popular. But that, that would be, you know, shown, I guess, on these studies. So just want to say, I support them. I'm very happy that they're there. But I also did not hear anything about them, but that is my fault.
Thank you.
Sharon Kelly, and I'm at three sixteen Sudbury Road, formerly three ten Sudbury Road. I was completely blindsided. I don't get the Stowe paper. So I just want to say that I am another person that was unaware. And I have never had to call the police because I felt people were excessively speeding. I feel like I'm home a lot of the time. I'm out with my dogs. I walk my dogs. So I'm visible on Sudbury Road, the German Shepherd quite a bit. And I don't really feel, it's, we don't have a lot of traffic during the day and it is an infrequent person that does go a little bit fast, but it's very infrequently. So I would, I think twenty miles per hour is, sorry, is very, I feel it's very slow. My husband rode his bicycle by the portable speed thing and he was going fourteen miles per hour. So I think twenty is slow. And I wish that you would reconsider. That's, that's it.
Linda Hathaway, seventy-six Crescent Street. I don't need to go into the details of how long our family's been here, but. The comment I have is, Mr. Chair, is can you just clarify exactly where that zone is for those of us who are not in that area? Anybody watching on TV or whatever. Is it from Queens Lane all the way, how far past Pine Bluff? That's where I was trying to figure out.
Chief, can you give, so it's, your, your house, two seventy-seven?
So it's when you come out of the S-curve, it's going towards State Road and then you go past Farrell's old house. And then it turns from twenty-five there, well, no, that's turns, or turns to thirty, from twenty-five to thirty-five. Now it stays, now it changes to twenty. And then it goes a few, it goes to the property line of Pine Bluffs, the other direction too.
Okay. Thank you.
And the back, and then I'll come back.
Brian Bemus, three ten Sudbury Road. My opinion is, is that if it's one of the two options, I would prefer to see the twenty mile an hour safety zone stay. I'm not interested in a temporary option. I'm interested in more of a permanent solution. This was done over a several-year process in an open town forum, public meeting. This was backed up by data from the police department, from the Traffic Safety Committee, backed up by state law, backed up by DOT. The area qualifies for it. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, that's, that's the end of, of that, you know. And I'm sorry that people were not aware of it, but the criteria was followed for open town meeting and that's the process. The town has spent money on that, so to reevaluate that, to spend more money, I think is a waste. If we're going to spend more money, I'd like to see a flashing sign that would get some people's attention. You know, I sit on my front porch and anybody in here is welcome to come over here and sit on my front porch and watch people pull in and out of Pine Bluffs. And the number of almost car accidents has increased in the time that I've been there exponentially. So, you know, I'm, I hear horn beeps and everything else all the time. You know, soccer over there is a very busy time all over the weekend. We have hundreds of people that come to Honey Pot on the weekends. I mean, it's always been that way, but at least in the time that the advertisement's been out there on the local television. You know, the, the vehicle traffic has definitely picked up. So I think anything that we can do to try and eliminate or alleviate as much as possible when traffic fatalities are up nationwide and statewide, to slow down people in an area recreated by children, I think is, is the right approach. And I don't understand the rationale from long-term residents, who I respect their right to, you know, to their opinion and whatnot, about slowing down for a couple miles an hour over an extra five hundred feet. I don't, I don't understand the rationale of that. And if you do decide to remove it or put in rumble strips, is the town willing to accept the liability if somebody's killed pulling out of Pine Bluff speeding? I mean, you know, this is a, this is a known problem. I've been told by officials that I won't mention that Sudbury Road has always been a speeding problem. You know, everywhere around town has burnout problems and, you know, every road, residents are asking, Whitman is asking to be a local traffic only.
Let's just keep it.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm saying is, is I don't hear anybody else around town or anywhere around surrounding towns asking for speed limits to be raised. If anything, I see more safety zones and school zones and crosswalk signs and flashing signs and speed signs than I've ever seen.
Okay, your point is well taken. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, question.
Why was it such a drastic reduction from thirty-five to twenty? Versus thirty or twenty-five?
So safety zones have one speed limit that we're able to lower it to. So there was no other option.
So once it's classified as a safety zone, it goes to twenty?
Exactly.
That's what the requirement is. Okay. All right, I'm going to close public comment and open it to the board.
There's so many questions. So we've only lived here for eleven years. I'm going to direct a question to Linda because I think she might be able to answer this. Do you know when Pine Bluff became, like, really became active with soccer and everything?
Oh, God. Eight seventies or eighties, about then.
Okay. But do you think?
I played over thirty women's soccer there and I'm now well over thirty.
Do you feel like, okay, but you feel like it has increased in usage over?
I, it's, my kids played there. Now my grandkids are there. So it's, it's used a lot.
I just wanted to get kind of an idea of the usage of Pine Bluffs because I think that that speaks.
I can actually speak.
You could speak. You could speak, do it too, Chair.
Yes, there you go.
Actually, because I live right across the lake.
Right. Okay.
And when I had first moved in back, and too many moons ago now, to what it is now, it is at least threefold.
I know that when we moved in, at least the playground was brand new. So I know that it has definitely been going through changes and definitely has been utilized more. And to that, I want to say, I believe that there has been more traffic over the last, at least eleven years since we've been living here. So.
And I can attest to that as well.
That was one thing I wanted to say. I had a question for the chief about, if I may, just go through my quick little list. I had a question for the chief about the types of enforcement for ticketing and those kind of zones. Are they the same type of enforcement that you would be doing in a school zone, say? Like, would it be that same type of ticketing that you would do? So if it's in, if you, so say you had to write a ticket for somebody in that, in that zone.
So it would be.
What kind of a ticket are you writing for somebody?
It would just be for a, a speed violation.
Okay.
And it would be the officer's discretion on whether or not a citation and warning or whatnot would happen. I can't, by law, I'm not allowed to order the officers to write tickets.
Okay. Right. And it would, so it would be at their discretion. But if you are writing a ticket, if, so if somebody speeds by the school, it is.
During school zone hours.
During school zone hours. Okay. So, and because this is, it's not.
It's twenty-four hours.
It's twenty-four hours. It would be essentially.
There's no specialty fine on it.
Okay. And then I just want to clarify again that this is not a twenty mile an hour speed limit for the entire road, that it is really just that one section. Because I feel like, obviously, no one wants to be driving twenty miles an hour down Sudbury Road the entire way. But I do think the section by, by the park makes sense. Okay, that's my question. Sorry. Thank you.
Very good.
I'm wondering if I could get clarification on just a brief synopsis of how the speed zone was arrived at, why that choice came about in the first place.
Sure, I can speak to some of that. I think there was certainly a history of concern over, over that section of roadway from the Traffic Safety Committee before my time. But essentially, when, when a complaint comes to the committee, we talk a little bit about the, the certain situation of that roadway, the number, you know, who, who's living over there? Are there any special sites in the area, like the recreation area? What's, what's really happening there? We try to understand from the, the person who made the complaint, but then we also discuss together if this is something we want to learn more about. So what the chief will do is typically put out speed radar signs, which I believe we did in November of twenty-three, to get data on the number of cars and the speed of those cars, just to understand, you know, what, what the volume is on that roadway. Are people speeding? Are they not? What's the usage like? So the, the speed there, I think the eighty-fifth percentile was around thirty-four, thirty-five at that time, which is about the speed limit. So that tells us that we're not able to lower the speed limit through, through a typical mass stop process.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. So the eighty-fifth percentile is not high enough or it's, it's still low. So I think the state would say, sounds like your speed limit's appropriate. So that's why we're looking for another, another mechanism.
End it, sorry.
So, so you, so we couldn't reduce the speed limit in any other way. You had to apply the speed zone, which is, which is twenty miles an hour. You don't have a choice to, to put it at twenty-five or thirty. Thank you. I also recollect that at one point there was discussion, perhaps here with the Recreation Department about the sightlines exiting Pine Bluffs. And, or maybe it wasn't here, sorry. But I remember there was a lot of concern, I know, turning toward town from Pine Bluffs. And there's, it's kind of a blind turn, or it was at the time. And I was wondering if anything had been done to address that. And I, I understand that was probably either, it would be a different department.
So we, that was one of the discussions we had at the traffic, at the meeting. And Brian Hatch did say that they did some work down in that area. So, but they, as much as they tried to improve it, it didn't alleviate those concerns.
Right. I mean, it's, it's, yeah. So I kind of feel, just in that one direction already, it's, it warrants having a lower speed limit just because it's hard to see oncoming traffic coming out of the, um, might be speeding up, coming out of that twenty-five mile an hour zone. Oh, goody, I'm free, bang! I think those are my two questions.
You've waited patiently and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
First question was, when was the speed changed to twenty miles an hour?
January.
And what has the result been? Has there been any observation on the circumstances of safety, has safety improved? Or has there been a desired effect?
I can't tell you on an enforcement side. We have many roads with complaints and we're slowly making our way around town.
Mike, I'm sorry. You need to speak.
I'm sorry. So we, I'm sorry. So we have not done heavy directed enforcement in that area. We have a lot of roads with a lot of speeding complaints. So the officers are spreading themselves out through other roadways at this time. So we've not been able to sit down there. There was an officer that was in the area for a while, but that was on, on the bridge and doing enforcement on, uh, coming off of, from the intersection. And I can tell you from the twenty, we have twenty-one years of records. And for Sudbury Road, we've made over thirty-nine thousand stops on that road. And, which has resulted in eight hundred and fifty-two citations, which are just pieces of paper. And out of those, a hundred and twenty-three were money tickets. We're not very big on, on money, writing money tickets. So it's a lot about education. I would defer you to ask the neighbors if, if they've seen, I mean, we've heard tonight already that one neighbor stated that it has made an impact on his life.
Is it okay to ask neighbors to respond?
I had actually closed it off to public comment, but I would open it for just this one instance, very specifically.
Well, actually, I have a better question that I'd like to ask if we're just going to open it for a special instance. I've heard the comments about how people feel it has been a little safer with the twenty miles per hour. And the main complaint I've heard is that this change was done without people being notified. So many people got upset that this was changed because they weren't told about it. What I haven't heard is, how is it negatively impacting the neighborhood by going down to twenty mile per hour? I'll look to the chair to call, to answer my question.
I live at three forty-three, just outside of the twenty mile an hour. I'm probably the most straightest part of Sudbury Road. And I can tell you, you've created an on-ramp. And people are going faster than they were before. And I work from home. My office is directly on the road and I'm watching it from nine to five. Sometimes in the evening when I'm watching TV as well, because I'm in my living room as well. So I've noticed that actually on my end, they've slightly increased. I also get them sort of. Um, I also get them sort of ending their fun ride and sometimes slowing down. I also hear them beeping, and I believe some of the beepings are because of the twenty mile an hour. I do not know, but I have noticed actually a slight uptick based on my location. And it's prime, straight away.
In the back, and this will be the last comment.
Sure. Um, I think it has absolutely had somewhat of an impact. Uh, people that are paying attention driving have seemed to be slowing down a little bit. Um, and I would also add that if people are speeding up at the end of it, maybe we need to think about lowering the rest of the speed. Or doing more enforcement over there and not raising a speed limit where people are apparently speeding.
Okay. One more?
Um, the other observation or question, those rumble strips, they'll increase the noise level?
Good question. I do not have that answer.
Cause according to Google, not that Google knows everything, but according to a site that sells rumble strips, that's one downside is.
So that's, oh, sorry. Can I respond?
Please, yep.
So that has been a discussion for years about the reasons on speed bumps. Um, the noise increase, the, uh, trucks going over them, the amount of disruption. The cars accelerating again, uh, after it, and there's a whole other re- you know, there's a whole lot more reasons. That go along with it as well, too. But as far as that particular brand, at that particular, um, size, I don't have that answer.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Um, if you have any comments, since I started that way, I'm gonna go this way.
Um, I'm in favor of keeping things as they are. I think it has improved safety. I, I'm disturbed to hear that people have started speeding up faster when the speed has been lowered. And maybe that, when, um, that's something else that needs to be addressed, but. As far as I'm concerned, I think we should keep it as is.
Okay. The straight.
I like the idea of a safer zone around the park entrance. Um, I'm also concerned that, that will speed up at the end of the speed zone. Um, and I am inclined to ask the chief to add to the big list of. At least to check it out, uh, on your, you know, in the rotation of your list and see if there's.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's some additional education there, um. I, I have an, another question about. If I might.
Hmm.
Uh, I know there, sometimes there's a sign that says speed limit strictly enforced. I don't know if that's appropriate, because, again, it speaks to whether we can actually do that. Um, and I don't know whether, at the end of the twenty mile an hour zone. If we could consider adding an additional, uh, tool to see if it would. If it would answer this other issue. But I'm generally in favor of trying it at least a little longer to see if this is a, a safer option.
Um, yes, so I am, um, in favor of keeping it. Um, I will tell you what I am not in favor of, um, are the rumble strips. I just, I don't, I don't think I can get behind them at this juncture. Um, but I do think I wanna, I wanna keep the, the safety zone the way that it is, again, with the caveat that. I think if this neighbor is bringing up the speeding at the end of it, then obviously. It is something that, that needs to be looked at, if possible, um, because, again. Sudbury Road is a road that people speed on, and so if, if, I, I don't think that the. I, I mean, if we're having people slow down, then they're gonna keep speeding, then maybe this is when we get masti OT and, and, and then we can. Say to them, like, okay, then we need to actually lower the speed limit on the entire road then. Because if, if people are going to continue to speed, then we need to have them slow down. Um, but we won't have that data unless, so, um, but my two cents on the rumble strips.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, my thoughts, um, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't mind seeing the twenty mile an hours. And the rumble strips added.
Listen, I also like a flashing light, but I will not do that to you.
Well, no. Um, the, uh, the three-quarter of an inch is not very high. Um, it's not like a regular speed bump. Um, but I think having that at both ends. That will also help to stop the quick. Shooting off the exit ramp, uh, a- approach, so I'm, I do think.
That's, that's a good point, actually.
Um, and I do think that adding those, um, also, that will. I will guarantee that will slow people down. I am also of the opinion in that area, I am not willing to sit here and sacrifice the life. Of any child, one child getting hit by a car, as far as I am concerned, is too many. And I'm not willing to stake a child's life on that. So the twenty mile an hour, I do agree with, and I think we should actually as an option, uh, in the motion. To actually add those, re- they're more of a reminder strip, they're not really a rumble strip.
Can I ask you a question about the, do, may I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, how do you, my, um, now I'm gonna go back to last week, but how do we feel about, it's the motorcycles going over those? I think that freaked me out the most.
These are designed for those.
Okay.
So I looked at motorcycles, bicycles, cars.
Okay.
And because of the documented high speeds, uh, of, you know, granted, they're few and far between, but we do have cars doing over eighty miles an hour. On Sudbury Road.
Okay.
What happens when they go over those? So that's why we looked at the high-speed ones.
Okay, okay.
Because we wanted to make sure everybody was.
It is, I mean, it is my, I think the ru- the rumble strips, so the noise, one of the concerns for me. But I do agree that it, that putting them at both ends does make sense, because then if you are creating a situation where people can't speed up, then. That, that does make sense. Um, but I do not want to create a situation where we actually create a fatality. Because we have cre- in trying to create a safer situation, we actually create a, more of an unsafe situation.
So the, can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
So, um, these are designed for, as the chair said, as more reminder strips for construction on the highway. I'm sorry, so these are more designed for construction on the highway, um, and to, to remind people to slow down when they're on the highway.
Okay, okay.
So I have a question about the placement of the rumble strip.
Mm-hmm.
Courtney, can you speak a little louder also?
Yep. So my question about the placement of the rumble strip is, will it be in front of the residence house? Who has complained that people are speeding up there already? Because to give her acceleration and noise is probably punitive, and I would not like to see that.
Uh, well, that wasn't a plan that we were thinking of, and so it would be up to the board to direct us on. If that's what they wanted, where they wanted it.
Got it.
So, and I, there is a cost, these are not inexpensive. Um, and it's a lot of our budget then right then and there, to have just the two. So, and then we'll put, get a, to your point. You have to put warning signs before.
Right.
And right there, you gotta make sure it's, well, you know, um, you know, you get those advisory signs. But then to, to your point on signs, like, I don't want people to go sign-blind, and I don't wanna litter our neighborhood with signs either.
Right.
So.
So, as the chief, what is your. Recommendation?
I know that the area has to be kept safe. The twenty mile an hour safety zone is the, was the avenue that we had at the time. If there was another option, which we brought forward, it has to be something. There's gotta be some sort of mechanism to slow people down, whether that's the speed sign or the rumble strips, rumble strips. There's gotta be something there, because we, like you said, we can't have a kid running out, we can't have people going past. Where vulnerable roadway users are there, um, without having something. So, for me, it would be, something has to be in place. Um, and if it's both the sign and this, so be it, does it have to be right at the, the entrance, uh, the. End of it towards the residence house? No, it could be pushed back like fifty feet, you know, a hundred feet on either side. It can be moved. Like I said, one of these designs is not to permanently put them in, you know? We could also do it, you know, for, um, you know, when we look at the weather coming up. And we look at the usage, you know, would we have to have these down? Uh, you know, I would say no. Cause you, you are, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there are times where it's, the pine bluffs has a giant snow mound. That's where the highway plows their snow.
Mm-hmm.
No one's going in there using it. Why would we keep the, the strips? We wouldn't. So, like, just to have that ability and that, uh, to, to make those decisions would be helpful.
Um, I was thinking of both because of the situation that the chief had mentioned earlier, which is. We have a lot of roads, we have only so many officers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, for the enforcement aspect of things. Um, human nature, yep, when they know that the police are in that area, everybody slows down.
Yeah.
Then word gets out, they're gone! So we're back again to a situation of high speed, so that's why I was thinking the strips in addition to. The twenty mile an hour.
Yep.
Because that's, um, it's a more constant, um.
Yeah.
Avenue and reminder for folks, and the fact that it is movable. So we could move it away from someone's residence and, and place it. Um, I think would, um, be advantageous.
I have more questions now, I'm sorry. Do you have the life expect, like, the life, not expectancy of it is, but what is, like, how long do these last for?
That's, that's a great question, and I did not, I did not look that up.
Um, again, it's cost, it's, I just, because now it's, we're talking, I just wanna make sure we have the money for it. So it's gonna, because now we're talking about two rumble strips, we're talking about two signs, because you're absolutely right, we cannot put, that, you can't just. You have to signage it, right? You can't just, so it, it is just, it's gonna cost money. And I'm not saying I am a po- I'm, you made some very good points, I know, I'm agreeing with. I just wanna make sure that we think it through from a, uh, fiscal. And I just wanna make sure we can afford it.
Uh, before going, uh, Madam Administrator, if we, uh, did institute these reminder. Strips, we'll call them, uh, is that something that's gonna greatly impact our budget?
No, um, I've set aside ARPA funds for traffic safety to get some of these, um, matters addressed. Um, and if I may also add, I, so I, I do have a map up of the area. I do think, you know, traffic safety could look at, if you are looking at these rumble strips. I mean, there are certainly areas along, that I would say are inside the safety zone, that would not be directly in front of a house. I mean, there is, you know, some of the residents are set farther back, there is a lot of woodland around. So I do think that traffic safety could identify, um, reasonable locations that would have the least impact. Sound-wise to residents in that area. There seems to be, you know, like, I don't think it needs to be at each end of the safety zone. I think they could be in a little bit, maybe the signs are one warning, then the strip is another. Um, but it certainly is not overly populated by residential properties that they couldn't find sort of an ideal area.
Thank you. Comments, anybody else?
I'm done.
Okay, um, so then, we have now. I'm sorry.
I said I can make this motion if you want me to.
Uh, sure.
Um. Mister Chair, uh, well, based on our conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Mister Chair, I move to reaffirm the Sudbury Road safety zone as previously approved. And install rumble strips on either side of the Pine Bluff Recreation Area.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing done, none, all those in favor?
I.
All right.
All right.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Okay. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, um, if we can keep it down, please, we do have other business, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Um, I'll now take the next motion.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to approve the draft public comment policy.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Looks good.
So, if I may, Mister Chair?
He's like, I never read it, it's fine.
Nice.
Uh, Madam Administrator.
Um, so I was asked, um, a, a question to come up to the chair a few weeks ago. From a non-resident in a Massachusetts community, asking if they could come before the board and speak during public comment. So we had a conversation, um, about that and just the fact that, while public comment rules are announced at the beginning of the meeting. There was nothing formalized, so I was asked to put a draft together, this is pretty much what rules you're following, just fine-tune some of it. Um, obviously, it, it outlines the open meeting law, it outlines the disclaimer about the, um. Free speech principles, um, just sort of formalizes the process that you're already having. So, that is why this is before you tonight.
So now I have a question, are we, do we actually allow, uh, someone from another community to speak?
So we don't not allow it, I mean, it was, it's still at the discretion of the chair, who speaks. Um, I will say, the law actually. A, a person is not required legally to provide their name and address during public comment.
Hmm.
Um, so someone could come before you and just start speaking, they have that right. Um, we did talk about whether or not we wanted to have or allow outside or non-residents. Um, but then, to be honest with you, I got into the situation that if I did that, I would have to have a ca- add a caveat for employees. That came before you for, for matters, if they're not residents, so I just left it that, it's still at the discretion of the chair, who speaks.
Great.
So if, there's no, there's no legal requirement for them to state their name and address?
It's for the minute.
How do we get away with saying the board shall, addressing the board shall state their name and address?
Well, so, we don't have a policy, so if we have a policy, you can say it's in our policy that you provide your name and address. Without an at, without one, someone can say, I'm not giving you anything, you then point to, well, we have a policy.
Can they still say, I'm not giving you anything?
So there are groups that will still fight.
But at that point, the chair doesn't have to recognize them.
You don't have to recognize them.
Which is within legal rights.
I mean, it's maybe, may not matter, but it's a courtesy to know with whom we're speaking.
Mm-hmm.
On both sides, we've got.
I'm just thinking more along the lines of the, whatever you call the people that come in with their video recorders. To antagonize First Amendment violations and things like that, what happens then?
And that's who has been pushed. And that's who has been pushing back and refuses to state a name and address.
Yeah.
They're the First Amendment auditors, is what they call themselves.
Yeah, those people.
Yes. So if it's if it makes you more comfortable, it could certainly say the chair will ask persons to state their name and address. So if there is a uh opposition to it, I mean, in my opinion, if someone comes in and we we know that it's going to be adversarial, it's easy to just let them say what they want and be on their way. Um, so we could change that a little bit to just make it that you would ask their name if they say, I'm not giving it.
Hmm.
There's really nothing you can do to force them to do that. And so we could tweak that sentence if you'd like.
But the chair could still opt not to allow him to speak.
You could. I mean, I do think that depending on the group, it would, if if the chair chooses not to recognize them because they refuse to give their name, then they're gonna take that further.
That's what they're looking for.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So if that is something, we could certainly change that. Um. Once recognized by the chair, the chair will ask all persons to state their name and address prior to speaking and just remove the shall. Um.
Yeah, yep.
So it gives you the option, and if someone really does push back, you are covered.
Okay.
Okay. I think that change makes sense.
Ready for motion?
You're ready.
Did I make that motion?
You did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, great.
So do we need to make an amended motion?
No, cause it was a draft.
Cause it's, it's, it was just the draft. Um, and it's not a substantial change.
Okay.
So I think we're fine. Um. Any other comments from anyone?
Looks good.
Mm-mm.
All right, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record show, uh, the draft uh is now approved as policy with the change. Great. Next motion, please.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
Um, any comments?
Everything looks great.
Yeah, actually.
I would like to point out this QR code that ended up happening from my suggestion.
Very nice.
Nicely done.
Thank you. Thank you to whoever put, to Valerie, to whoever put it together. Did you do this, Eric?
I did.
Denise, Miss Denise. You did it?
I did, and I apologize because I don't know what suggestion. It was the Town Hall Reuse Committee that came up with the idea. So I must have, I didn't, I didn't watch the last meeting.
So she suggested separately at the last meeting that when we were to put flyers um in future, we could have something to put in the schools.
Oh, nice.
And to put it in the school and all those things.
Yes.
Yes, and and just a quick question. Did we get permission from the schools to uh put the QR code?
I did not follow up, but I will answer.
That would be wonderful. And because, and then once we know, because we can make sure we get them posted with the QR code.
Okay.
Great.
Uh, one note I will one question I do have about the letter of support for the Masters Academy section. So right after the explanation of what happened, it says Chair Tool called for a vote and the motion failed zero to four.
That's right.
Then further, it does explain that another motion was made.
Correct.
Is it, for clarity's sake, would it be worthwhile adding the reasons why the motion was failed rather than making an amendment?
Uh, isn't that in the narrative, why it failed?
The board discussed addressing the letter to the public or to all boards and committees um as opposed to ju- to just the permitting boards and agreed that it is an important letter so that people can understand the issue. The board made changes to the letter.
And then Chair Tool called for a vote and the motion failed zero to four.
The original motion.
The original, on the, on the original.
It wasn't clarified.
I I had the same response. I'm like, what?
So would you, would you like to add the word original?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So Chair Tool called for a vote on the original motion?
Yes.
And the motion failed?
Yep.
That'll work.
Well, I mean, I just had to go back and read it through again and say, oh, I see. There was discussion, and then they went to a different thing, so.
Mm-hmm. Cause the motions don't usually fail.
All right, any other comments? All right, well, take a vote. All those in favor approving the meeting minutes with the one change?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, it is unanimous. Board correspondents.
Who would like to question? Um. The, I noticed the letter from, I had coincidentally asked town administrator whatever happened to the issue about storage at the community center. Then I see the letter from the gentleman who had requested that.
The trailer.
Mm-hmm.
And have you heard anything? Is anything going on with, I believe you said you weren't in attendance at that meeting.
Right, so we went back at the time you all discussed it. It was January, it was actually also the January twenty third meeting, and the board tabled the matter. Um, so nothing has come of it since then.
I thought we had discussed someone, I don't know who that someone would be, investigating there was some area in the shrubbery, grassy area that could be leveled and provide sure-footedness for trailers, and that could be rented out to people like the Boy Scouts or anybody else who wants to store a trailer there rather than having to move it back and forth.
Should we make this an agenda item?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, I would um work to put it on an agenda um as a discussion. I'm not sure we would be taking a vote at that point, but at least get it on the agenda for further discussion so that we can kind of look at things also um to give enough time for um our Madam Administrator to uh do some research uh with other towns. Um, and I don't think putting it on our next agenda is enough time.
Well, but to that, I I'm not planning to research anything until you have a discussion and tell me what to research because the actual last conversation was you wanted to develop policies and whatnot around it, but then you tabled the matter. So I'm not reaching out to the towns until you give me direction on what I'm researching.
I thought the idea was we were, I I and for that, I was, I had refused myself from that specific one because my son is part of the scouts and I felt like it, but I thought the idea was that we were looking into because it it could possibly grow legs into something else. Um, the idea was looking into uh having rental, rental agreements for spaces.
Yes, so from the minutes, the board members discussed the request and said it would be using taxpayer municipal property for a private non- not-for-profit purpose, even though the nonprofit serves the community. If this were allowed, the board would wanna set up policies and rental agreements. Also, it is assumed that part of the rental agreement for renting a room inside includes use of the outside area for parking. The lot is full for many events. The board did not make a decision and tabled the item.
So yeah, we should add it as another agenda for P trip.
Yeah, and I think if you have another conversation about what direction, you know, if it is a grassy area, if it is calling other towns, at least you have that conversation, then we can do some research.
Yep.
And present back whatever direction you wanna have more information on.
Yep.
Great.
Makes sense. The only other comment I had was the lovely letter from the Comcast folks. Who knew cable cards existed? I did.
You're so kind to always include them in our discussion.
Um, I do.
I mean, that's not that I care, but.
Um, there was the paint stewardship legislation information um which actually was, it pretty much did all the homework for us. Um. I think it would behoove us to get that onto an agenda um so we can at least take a look at it.
For some reason, I thought it was gonna be on a future agenda. But now I realize that's wrong of me to think it would be. But yeah, I agree.
Um, this is a, this is not from a constituent in our town. This is just somebody who is reaching out to all towns in all of Massachusetts to look for support?
They are asking you to pass a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's a, it's an advocacy group.
Resolution of support.
Asking you to pass a resolution.
But he is based in Dalton.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right, uh, anything else from uh correspondence? I'll take a final motion.
I move, Mister Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We have things to sign.